Evening, welcome to the North Attleboro Zoning Board of Appeals for August 19th, 2025, 6:00 PM. We have four, we have two continued public hearings, two new public hearings. And I think we're gonna take them in order, the continued public hearings first. And I am recusing myself from the first two public hearings, both on Johnson Street, and I am, and Kristen is going to be taken her way.
All right.
Bruce, you wanna read the first one in?
Okay. Jean Max Matherin for a special permit pursuant to Chapter 290, Article 5, Use Regulations, Schedule B, Agriculture Number 2 of the North Attleboro zoning bylaws to allow for chickens as submitted in the application for the property located at 47 Johnson Street. The property is further described as Lot Number 182 on Assessors Platte Number 43 and located within an R-15 residential district and contains 10,454 plus or minus square feet of land.
Is the applicant here?
Oh, that's not good.
The applicant is not here. Shall we move on to the next one and hope they arrive?
Sure.
Give them a little time.
Let's read that, we'll go ahead and read that one in.
Okay. So this will be Zone 4175 application. Coppala Kay Vasuvi, Vasu Devon.
I hope I pronounced that right.
That's close enough.
Okay, you did that good. For variance pursuant to Chapter 290, Article 4, Intensity Regulations, Schedule A for lot area, lot frontage, lot width, and lot, lot depth requirements, along with a special permit pursuant to Article 7, 290-37, non-conforming or existing uses of land of the North Attleboro zoning bylaws to construct a new dwelling at the property located at 35 Johnson Street as described in the application. The property is further described as Lot Number 183 on Assessors Platte Number 43 and located in an R-15 residential district with 11,615 plus or minus square feet of land.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this one.
Okay, my name is Jack Jacoby, my office is at 144 Bank Street, I represent the applicant. He is on vacation in India, he could have been here last month, but we didn't have a quorum, so this was pre-planned. And so if we could put the other plan up that shows the current conditions?
This is the only one I have.
I filed both, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, let me check my emails.
Well, let me say anyway that this is a completely dilapidated house that is absolutely unusable, it's not able to be rehabbed, it needs to be knocked down. It's non-conforming as to lot size, lot frontage, lot width, lot depth, and front yard setback. Other than that, it's perfect. And what the applicant wishes to do is to build a new two-story house at a 28 by 34-foot footprint with an attached garage of 24 by 34. The new house will not meet lot size, frontage, width, or depth, but it will meet all of the other requirements, and it will cure the front yard discrepancy that exists now. So we are asking to alter the non-conforming use by building the, a brand-new house, which we believe will be much better for the neighborhood, to clean this property up and make it a credit to the neighborhood and not detract from property values of those around it. So I don't want to belabor this, but I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have concerning this.
It's the only plan that was submitted?
And as a matter of fact, I was just handed the floor plan, so if I could, I could show you the elevations.
Yeah, that would be...
I have one quick question on this one. You noted you'd also need the lot depth, but on the plan it says you have 125.9.
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear that.
Sure, you're also requesting the lot depth, but the plan shows that you have that, unless it's a typo on the plan?
Well, if we conform in two respects, that's even better.
Sure.
So I think, again, that this is a much better situation to create a new property than to, than to leave this dilapidated property. I think it's a modest-sized house, I think it fits in with the neighborhood.
It does look like the garage is only 12 by 34.
I'm the contractor.
You've gotta give your name and your address first.
My name is Adam Rogic. P.O. but to all out of Thailand. And this is the house which I, which I wanna build, just add the garage, there's no garage there, we're waiting for approval, and we go to architect and add the garage, this is missing garage over here. We built this house in Attleboro, we have to add the garage.
Okay, but the, the plan view has the garage shown.
No, no, one more.
So it's gonna be two stalls?
Two, yes, two.
Okay, so it will be 24, okay. And just, how does that compare to the current footprint?
The current footprint is on this plan, which in version, we can't adapt.
Okay.
Not too much different size from the current.
Do we have that, or no?
It wasn't submitted. If you don't mind sending that to me after, that would be wonderful. Perfect, thank you.
It is, but it's not very well. Does anyone, do we have any questions?
It seems to be a net improvement on the site, and it still meets the side yard setbacks, it meets the front, or it will meet the front, and it will meet the rear, from what I can tell.
Bruce, did you want this one? Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against? Come on, come on up and just state your name and address.
My name is Carrie McInnis, and I live at 31 Johnson Street, right next door to where they're proposing the new build, which I appreciate. It has been abandoned for almost six years now, and even before that, it was falling down, the property owners didn't really take good care of it. I just have a few questions, which some you may be able to answer here or give some insight to. So it does, if I could see the existing, how does it stand the side setback? So I'm on the, what would be the top side of that plan, just looking at the screen. Uh, no, sorry, the, where it says Carrie Raffield and Jennifer McInnis, yeah, right there.
It appears to be further away.
Okay, so it's 14, 6 now?
Yeah, and we're going...
And you're gonna be 16?
Yeah, we're making it conform.
Okay.
Doesn't slightly, it's slightly under, slightly too close to you right now.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't coming any closer, so I wanted to know what it was currently at, so.
Further away.
Further away, even better. Okay, so that, that's helpful. And it, in the plans, it says it's gonna be a colonial, so I just was hoping to see the elevations too, because...
It's typical colonial, nothing...
Okay, 'cause just in the neighborhood, there's, it's all capes and single-story ranches, so I don't want like, I mean, my concern is that it's gonna be this like huge, you know, house compared to what else is in the neighborhood, so as far as like the height of it, I see that it's two stories, and then there's an attic. Do you know how much taller it's going to be than the current structure?
Yeah, yeah, and 26 feet, about 25 maximum.
To the ridge line, 35 to the ridge line?
Thirty maximum.
The code is 25.
Code is 35, this will be 26.
Yes.
26 high?
10 feet from ground to the top of the first floor, and another 10 feet, 20 plus roof, 6 feet.
Okay.
20.
26 feet high, okay.
It's about, you know, plus minus 20.
Okay. So in the final plan, you're hoping to add another stall for the garage on the other side?
Yes, sort of, yes.
I mean, it looks a lot bigger than, but it's hard to tell, you know, on the here compared to what it's gonna look like.
So it looks like 28 feet wide for the house front, and then another 24 for the garage. So total of 52, 52 wide.
Yeah, okay. And the current, width of, the width of the current house, do we know what that is? The one that's there?
I don't see the convention on the plan.
Okay.
It's about similar, 28, 26, something like that, you know?
With the garage that they have now?
No, no, the width you're talking about, the, oh no, it's 12 feet short, 12 feet bigger.
So the existing house, what's the total from like here to this side?
It's 16, that is 12 feet extra, because it's 16 and 16, 32 minus...
Okay, okay.
So they're going to be meeting the side yard setbacks anyway, they're gonna be within their required limits, so they would be kind of limited, dictating that anyway, and they're gonna meet the height requirements, and they're gonna meet the front and back, which the current one doesn't meet the front.
Right.
So...
Yes, yep, okay. And I don't know if this is something that you know, but do you know what the timeline is for the demo, or if that has to do with this type of a meeting or not?
Just explain to you, if the board votes in favor, then some number of days later, a decision will be filed with the town clerk.
Okay.
There's a 20-day appeal period, so basically about a month from now, they could pull a demo permit.
Okay, a month from now, okay.
It's approximate, then, you know, I mean, obviously, if they wait a week to pull the permit after the appeal period expires, but it's, the earliest they could pull a permit would be about...
Would be a month, okay. You know, beyond the, the privacy and the height, you know, as far as the size of the house goes, my, more, most of my concern has to do with the, the safety of what you're doing as far as the demo goes with the asbestos, the lead remediation, because the house being built in 1950, I know in my house, it was built in 48, and we've already had some asbestos remediation and some lead remediation as well. So as, you know, we have kids, there's kids surrounding that house, you know, and the air qual, I just wanna make sure it's being monitored, and that might be a different meeting I need to go to, but are there steps in place?
She's just going into areas that we don't need to discuss.
Yeah, I know, we're not...
Not this one, okay.
It's not us, I, that's, I know.
Okay, then I will bring that up in a different space. But as far as the house, I mean, it looks like it's gonna be all, you know, conformed to everything, so I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else here to speak to this applicant? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. What do y'all?
I, I think this meets all the requirements that it needs to meet, and I went by there, and this is a vast improvement of what's sitting there right now, and I would think that everybody in that neighborhood would be grateful that somebody's finally doing something there, so, so that's all I have to say about it. And it does meet everything that we needed to meet, so.
I just have one question. This house isn't more than 80 years old, is it?
No, I believe it's a 1950s-era
Okay.
house, which would make it close, if you take 25 plus 50, that would be 75.
Okay.
So if it was built after 1950, or after 1945, I think we're okay?
Yeah, it's just, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have to file for historical. I know we're not there, but just checking for you.
This is new because it's a complete foundation, you notice that?
Okay, yeah, I was just making sure that you didn't miss a filing for something else.
I looked on mine, it said I can do this.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Does anyone...
Yeah, there's one other thing, 'cause you're mentioning a second, a second garage, that, that would not be included, what we're approving here.
That is not part of the application, we're not asking to do that. It's the first I've heard of that, frankly, and we can't make things further non-conforming, and so I would simply tell my client that...
It's my understanding that...
Go with what's on the plan.
He meant that this plan only shows one bay, while it's gonna be two, which is shown there. I think that was the discussion.
Oh, okay, well, yes, we're showing the two-car garage.
All right, I thought you, I thought he was talking about another garage.
No, it's 20, it's 24 feet wide, so that'd give you, you know, a center post and 10 or 11 feet on either side, right, so it'd be a two-car garage.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're looking for a special permit to alter the non-conforming structure, and we're looking for, by raising...
By raising the current structure and constructing in accordance with the plan that we've shown you.
And we're non-conforming for frontage width, frontage and width? And that's, that's all, correct?
That's what I'm seeing, I'm just, oh, area, area, frontage, width.
Okay.
The rest looks appropriate to me, unless you think otherwise.
Again, I was having...
So the, the request had things that you're asking, but I think it was asking for more things than you needed. You need the area?
Yep.
Frontage and lot width. I think you're conforming on everything else.
I think you're, you're correct. So those are the three areas of non-conformity that the special permit would allow to continue to exist.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Is anyone here for 47 Johnson Street? Is the applicant? Oh, okay, great. Okay, but there's the applicant for 47 Johnson Street here.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
I can give him a call, he's normally pretty receptive.
Somebody coming now?
If I'm allowed to do so.
There's someone coming in.
Oh, perfect. Yes. He's such a nice guy, I'd be so sad if he missed him.
Great, thank you. All right, you guys are up. Are you ready to talk to us about your application?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, so we already read it in, and now we'll...
Right up to the podium.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and if you could tell us about what you, what you would like to do.
Just basically get a chicken coop. My daughter wanted one for her birthday, but I didn't know the process was this long, so it took like a couple months, I guess. I still wanna get it for her.
Okay, could you give us some details about how many chickens, how big, what kind of a coop you're going to put in?
I guess the limit is six, I guess that's what she told me, it was six, I'm only allowed to have six, but...
Oh, the number of chickens?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's around that number, but, I mean, that's up to the, the board, I believe.
I can get more, I'll get more, but I'm willing to go by whatever it is that, but we'll go with six.
Oh, I will add, you did mention to me that you could meet the seven and a half variance.
Yes, I could.
So he actually won't need that variance that he applied for.
Okay, um, do you have, what are you planning for the coop, where, where on your lot do you think you'll put it?
It's actually gonna be in my backyard, I think I put a, yeah, right there, next to my, my shed.
So is, is that what you're, where you're looking for the variance, or to...
I guess the variance was...
Right on the property line?
No, it was against the back fence, right, is that what you, yeah.
Yeah, but he called me...
So I figured, I was thinking of going with a 10 by 16, but if I go with a 6 by 16, I'll have enough form in the back.
So you will not need a...
So I'll meet up with the, yeah.
But I believe it would have to be 15 feet off the property line.
15 feet off the back fence?
Yeah.
But doesn't, isn't there a rule that if it's small enough, that can be cut in half? I believe.
Okay.
Or the accessory?
We do that with sheds.
Yeah.
I'm not sure about the coop.
I don't recall that.
Oh.
I could be mistaken, but I don't recall that.
Well, I know we do it for sheds.
Yes.
I just assumed that that would mean any structure, small enough, that it, if it met that sort of requirement, it could split in half, but that's up to your discretion.
Pardon me?
That's up to your discretion.
Okay, have you had chickens before? Do you have experience keeping chickens?
Not in this country, no.
Okay, do you have a, a plan for how you're gonna store their feed, how you're gonna deal with their waste?
Well, yeah, I got a, a couple of, I use them for, I guess I can put them in my garden or something, use them as fertilizer. I've been doing some research, I can handle it.
Does anyone have, does anyone on the board have any questions or want additional info?
Could you just give us one minute?
Yeah, for sure. Oh, wait, oh, wait.
I think it's like five.
Okay, so it looks like it's H under... All right, it looks like it's under 290, 13H.
290, 13?
H.
Maybe?
No, maybe not. Okay, so it looks like a structure not to exceed 200 square feet.
That's not...
More than 12 feet in height, detached from the principal building shall be 50% of the side and rear minimum yard setbacks.
And that's an artist's... And that's the, that's the provision they're thinking of.
We're in R-15.
So do we have the dimensions of the chicken coop?
I haven't decided yet, I was just gonna go by whatever it is that's required, that's what I was gonna go with.
So you mentioned two numbers, 6 by 10, and you also mentioned, what, 16?
I was thinking like 6 by 16 with the coop in about 6 by 6, and a, and a 1 at the end, about 10 feet.
Well, that would, that would, that would be under 200 square feet, because it says any accessory building not to exceed 200 square feet, so I would have to think that that would include a chicken coop. Would you agree?
It seems, it seems to be the case to me.
Yes?
I think so.
Okay.
And is this R-10 or 15?
15, the application says R-15.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, would anyone in the audience like to speak to, to this applicant?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
I think I know the answer. Do I need to come up again?
Yep.
Carrie McInnis, 31 Johnson Street. I just wanna make sure there's no roosters, that's all, but those are illegal in North Attleboro, right? You guys don't plan on having any roosters? Yep. Happy to have a chicken coop in the neighborhood.
Okay, anyone else want to speak to this? Any other questions from the board? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
You're not done yet. Now, come back. They're just closing the public side of the hearing, not their chat.
Have any comments, concerns?
It's just a little, small lot, so they have to be careful with keeping it clean and making sure there's no pests and mice and rats, that's the reason we had a moratorium for a while, and it's crucial to keep it cleanly, and if there is a complaint, then the Board of Health people will come out and do an inspection, and, you know, you may have to give them up, if that's the case, but that's all I have.
And we have been limiting the number of chickens to what number?
I've heard it's been between 6 and 12.
When we had the town issue, we reduced it to 6, or we had went to a moratorium, then we went to 6, I'm not sure that we've gone back to 12, and I think given the area, I think 12 would be...
Six seems more appropriate?
Yes.
I don't recall it going back to 12 anyway. I don't recall it going back to 12.
We might not have.
Do you? Can you answer? I, I don't remember, I don't, I...
I don't recall it going back to 12. So I think it's at 6.
I might have seen it in passing, an older one, or something.
How far are we saying it has to be from the rear, rear lot line?
Seven and a half, 7.5. Okay, so this is a special permit, correct? We're looking for a special permit for chickens, for six chickens? Like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the chicken coop with the following things that need to be taken into consideration, that it does not exceed 200 square feet, nor 12 feet in height, that it is seven and a half feet from the property line, and no roosters.
Okay.
And a maximum of six chickens.
Okay.
One second. All in favor?
Now you're all set. Have a good night.
All right, now we're on to new public hearings. Bruce, you ready to read the next one? Do we have the applicant for Zero Anawan Road? Hi, I'm Ryan Sheehan, the applicant. He's gonna go ahead and read, read the application in first.
Got it.
Sheehan? Why is this on here?
Is it not there?
There's another page.
Okay, Ryan Sheehan, is that correct?
Yes.
For variance pursuant to Chapter 290, Article 4, Intensity Regulations, Schedule A for lot, lot depth requirements of the North Attleboro zoning bylaws to construct a single-family dwelling on the property located at Zero Anawan Road as described in the application. The property is further described as Lot Number 329 on Assessors Platte Number 22, located in an R-15 residential district and can... and contains eighteen thousand seventy-three plus or minus square feet of land.
So I'm Ryan Sheehan, the applicant, and we're looking for relief from the right sideline. It's in the R fifteen zone, you need a hundred and twenty feet, and we have a hundred and seven point nine three feet on that side.
My ample time to, to get prepared for this one, 'cause I wasn't paying attention to the other two. I was, I went and looked up the definition of lot depth. And it says the mean horizontal distance from the street line of the lot to its opposite rear line, measured in the general direction of the sidelines of the lot. I mean, this is a nothing burger, but it seems like you have one oh seven plus one twenty-seven divided by two as your lot depth, based on the definition. You're still short.
We're short, uh, twelve feet.
Twelve feet?
Yeah. We meet the area, we're, we exceed the area. Uh, most of the lots in that neighborhood are smaller, smaller than this with the same sideline issues.
So what my colleague here was saying is that it's the average of the two, so it'd actually be less that you need.
Great.
I think you're at one seventeen. If you average one twenty-seven and one oh seven. No, it's, yeah, like I say, I'm not.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, no, you're still short, but.
Okay, and it's only the depth?
Yes.
Yeah, I would see this as a, a shape factor, you know, a shape issue, the way it was split out. And, um, I think that's a justifiable cause, for me anyway, to be okay with that.
I agree. I ask if anybody's got something to.
Is there anybody in the audience here to speak to this? Why don't you take a seat real quick and let these people?
Excuse me. My name is William Lane. I own the property. I live at one eleven Anawan Road across the street. I went through this very same process in two thousand fourteen before I bought it from the Hewitts, and it was approved. Mostly because, um, the lots are, it's an older neighborhood and it backs up to watershed, so there's, there's nothing behind it but woods and, and, um, water, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the application for the variance for lot depth.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Alright, boss.
Uh, so, uh, we've got one more, one more, uh.
Julie New. How do you say your last name? Hoff. Julie Hoff for a special permit pursuant to chapter two ninety, article five, use regulations, schedule B, accessory use number one, home occupation of the North Attleboro zoning bylaws to allow the sale of baked goods as described in the application at the property located at eighteen Sylvan Road. The property is further described as lot number one sixty-six on assessors plot number forty-one located within an R twenty residential district and contains forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty plus or minus square feet of land.
Yes, hi, my name is Julie Hoff. I live at eighteen Sylvan Road in North Attleboro, and I have a small baking business that I run with my mom, and we've currently been baking out of a commercial kitchen, and, um, we are going through the process to get a permit to bake from the house in North Attleboro now, and the Board of Health has already visited to do that with us, um, and has said everything looks good. And we are currently just baking and doing deliveries at markets, pickups at markets, no one's intending to come to the home. There'll be no retail site or anything like that.
Do you have a commercial vehicle that you use for deliveries and?
Not yet.
And it's, it's you, just you and your mom?
Yes.
No other employees?
No.
Are there people that come and pick these goods up during the course of the day?
No, um, that's not what we're planning. Uh, we do the Attleboro Farmers Market, so we'll be doing orders that can get picked up there.
So then you, you deliver to them?
Correct. We would bring them to the market and they would pick them up from us there, yeah. Or I could do local delivery if there was something time-wise that didn't work out, but no intention of having folks come to the home.
Now, what did you say the Board of Health came out to approve, your kitchen?
Yeah, he came out to do an inspection of the kitchen for me.
You bake there and then you deliver the, the baked goods.
Exactly.
Other locations.
Exactly.
That's what you bake.
And it's like shelf-stable items, like pumpkin breads, banana breads, muffins, um, pizzales, if you know what those are, little wafer cookies. You know, nothing that is gonna spoil or be an issue like that.
You have any samples?
I will drop some off this week at the office.
Do you advertise this?
Um, yes, we have a social media page.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, and Instagram.
I'm only asking that for my own personal.
Yes. Nana's Oven is the name of the company. Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
So is, is there anybody else here to speak to this application?
I'll make a, a motion to approve the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, good luck.
Appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alrighty.
Okay, I guess that's it. We, so we're gonna, we're gonna delay the, uh, reorganization till next meeting. We're gonna delay the, or put off or talk about, uh, implementing r- uh, rules of conduct until the next meeting? Unless anybody feels otherwise, do a, is there a motion to, uh, close the meeting?
Shall we approve the minutes?
Oh, gotta do the minutes, that's right.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from seven twenty-two.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Just a, a question about the, the chickens. Do we wanna like settle this somewhere in writing so that we're not, we're not gonna remember, six, is it twelve, is it nine, is it?
Yeah, then you would've missed it.
I just think there was, I wanted to look at the.
Those minutes, we have.
There was a decision, I think in April, that was another chickens on that, it wasn't a Mount Hole.
Of course, yeah, no problem.
I remember. So I just feel like we're, we're not being super conservative. We should probably just write it down and just stick with it.
My only thought is that it could vary by size of the lot, so if you have thirty square feet or you might.
I'm sorry, you're allowed to have it.
Be fine with it, well, ten thousand is really small, but I don't know. I, I, you know, I'm up to whatever you guys want.
Oh, good.
I mean, the whole thing of chickens is.
I'm sorry about that.
Doesn't even exist in the bylaw. I mean, we, we've invent, I mean, this is just something that's been.
Alright.
You know.
But we should, we should put some parameters to it, for sure.
Is it worth, is it worth asking the health department for a recommendation?
Oh, it happens. I gotta listen to these guys, but.
Great point.
Yep.
I gotta listen to these guys, but.
Can't deal with it on a everyday basis, so, better.
You're very welcome. Have a good one.
Maybe it's some kind of a tiered system, fifteen thousand, thirty, if you get four.
We're talking about asking the health department for a recommendation on the number of chickens.
Oh, yeah, definitely. That would be a good idea. Okay, I will add that.
You could help us with that, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I'll ask them tomorrow.
Well, Arson had a good idea. Maybe there could be a tier system, like if you had ten thousand, maximum is six. Fifteen, the maximum's nine, something like that.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. So like square footage to chicken amount.
Right.
Just making sure I got it.
Number of feet in the coop.
Perfect. Got it, yeah.
The chicken ratio.
Exactly.
Did the health department provide a chicken ratio?
Yes. I will talk to them tomorrow. Um, I also did bring up, uh, some one fifty Draper Ave update photos if you guys just wanted a quick look at them, 'cause I guess it had been around a year since they were approved. So this was from like Thursday last week.
Have you been by there at all? Draper Avenue?
Yes.
It's coming along pretty good.
Yes.
It looks really nice from pictures. Oops, sorry if I'm going too fast. So the wetlands are back here.
Yeah, I don't know why, it's, it needs to, I think.
And then I just took a picture of behind the fence here. Yeah, that's it. Just thought I'd give you guys a little visual update. Yeah. And then there is one other thing. Um, Mike talked to us. He wants all of these meetings to be live. So he would like everyone to move back to the town's office downstairs to do meetings. I know, I don't think everyone's gonna like it, but it doesn't have a, doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but we would like to do it by January of next year, or we can start next meeting. What do you guys think? Sadly, we do have to say goodbye.
I have no problem.
This beautiful space.
But can they, because they can't do live here, is that what it is? There's like some tech thing or technological?
I guess not. It must be some sort of tech thing and they're thinking it's just easier to do it in one room, I guess. So, yeah. So, I mean, if it's easier to just start fresh in January, we can do that.
I'm happy with, I'm happy to go whenever.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Rip the Band-Aid off.
Okay. Alright, so I can schedule something in for next meeting then to get us down there, if that's okay?
Will you remind, remind us?
Of course, of course.
I will show up here.
No, I, you know me, I'm obsessive with letting people know every tiny little thing I do, so you will definitely be notified. Well, that's it on my end of things.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
All those in favor?